Great, welcome. It is Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, and this is the regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Montrose. And the first thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And when we have the flag displayed on the screen, I will ask everyone to mute themselves and to mute their video while Mayor Pro Tim Doug Glassbell leads us in the pledge.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim. Okay, and tonight, sitting in and performing the duties of our city clerk is our deputy city clerk, Michaela Amru, and I will turn it over to her to call tonight's roll.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum. And we'll start with roll call here. Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
And Dave Frank.
Present.
Mayor Bynum, all council members are present.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tim Glassbell, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Great. I'm not aware of any either. Thank you very much. So the first thing on our agenda tonight, as always, is our call for public comment for non-agenda items. So to our public, and we have quite a few people tonight who have dialed in or have joined us on Zoom. This is a time if you want to comment about something that is council and city-related, but isn't part of our agenda. So if you're here to comment on things that are coming up later, this isn't that time, but this is the time if you have something else. So I will ask if there is anyone else, and if there is, then I'll read some language that needs to proceed comments. So if you are here to make a public comment on a non-agenda item, can you please raise your hand? I don't see any, but I want to make sure that someone looking for the ability to raise their hand isn't cut off. Because we don't, we don't come back to them.
Since we have other people that were made to speak on an item, should we go ahead with reading the information?
You know, because it does apply throughout the meeting. You're absolutely right. That's a great idea. Thanks.
We do have one attendee who has raised their hand, so go ahead and read your statement, Mrs. Bynum, and then we'll move to.
Great. Perfect. So I will read the legal words that need to come before any public comment. And they are, "The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted." So that's a lot of legal language, but one of the things that means is that if you come to us tonight and you want to talk about the dog park, for example, and that's not on our agenda, we're not going to have a back and forth conversation with you because other people who might have been interested in hearing about the dog park aren't here tonight to participate. So we'll take comments, but then we usually follow up by having that item on a future agenda or by having council or city staff follow up with the person who made the comment. So, all that being said, welcome everyone who's here, and I see that Scott Damon would like to do public comment. And Scott, I know you are aware, but we usually limit this to three minutes just so we can continue on with our meeting. So with that, I will turn the floor over to you. Please introduce yourself, and for the record, we need you to give us your address.
Sure. Am I coming through okay?
You are.
Great. My name is Scott Damon, 6400 Road, Montrose County, unincorporated business owner in the city of Montrose. Myself and many, many other citizens are patiently awaiting city council to make a statement related to the divot situation with then Bear Moment, Bear Moment Bowman, excuse me, along with what happened when this was messaged into City Hall after the first concert last year, June 2019. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Damon. And for all those reasons I explained prior to your comments, you'll understand we're not being rude by not saying anything but moving on with our meeting. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Okay. I don't see any. Okay, so we're going to continue on with our agenda. So we've already moved through five items. So we'll go on to number six, which is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, and that is consideration of the minutes from the June 2nd, 2020 special city council meeting and the June 2nd regular city council meeting.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve the June 2nd, 2020 special council meeting and the June 2nd, 2020 regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion by Counselor Glassbell, a second by Counselor Frank, and I will now turn it over to Deputy City Clerk Michaela Amru for a vote.
All right. Barbara Bynum.
I wrote yes. Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
And Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you very much. You're doing fantastic. We miss our regular city clerk, but it's nice to have you with us tonight. Thanks. Okay, so next on our agenda is item number seven, which is ordinance 2503 on first reading. This is consideration of ordinance in the city of Montrose amending the zoning district designation of lots 1 through 10, 13, 15 through 28, and 36 through 56 in the estates at Stone Ridge from R2 Low Density District to R3 Medium Density District. And I will turn it over to Senior Planner Amy Sharp for a presentation.
Thank you. And Mayor Bynum, this is Assistant City Manager Anne Morgan Thaler, and we as a staff are going to take turns presenting on this item for you tonight. So I'll start. And again, Anne Morgan Thaler, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I'd just like to give a overview of this process for city council. And also, City Attorney Stephen Alcorn will give some additional information. Amy Sharp will present about the specifics of the application, and Scott Murphy, our city engineer, also has some information to share with you tonight. So as is written in your packet, and just as a reminder for people who might be joining us today and haven't been following this item, this item went to Planning Commission first. It's a rezoning application, and rezoning applications always go to Planning Commission first as a first step in the process. And Planning Commission makes a recommendation to city council. And city council then reviews that recommendation and votes on it. So this is not a call-up or a de novo type hearing. It's not an appeal tonight. This is a regular part of the review process. And Amy will be sharing information about the Planning Commission review. And at that Planning Commission meeting, citizens did have an opportunity to give public comment. But since you are not reviewing the entirety of the record of that, you're simply reviewing tonight the Planning Commission's decision. The record is not included in your packet materials. Information about the application is included in your packet materials, and also the recommendation from the Planning Commission is included in your packet materials. So I just wanted to give you that overview about what the general application process is for this rezoning application this evening. And City Attorney Stephen Alcorn, would you like to go next?
Sure. The, there's a lot of question about what the council is going to be deciding today. So the city council may approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission. They may deny the recommendation, or upon its own motion, schedule the matter for a de novo hearing. The standard of review for council, so how you make your decision, is whether there has been an abuse of discretion by the Planning Commission that the decision is so unsupported by facts that it is arbitrary and capricious. So a couple of people have said, "I remember that Elks hearing from a few months ago, and council members were down in the weeds and saying, 'Okay, we're going to allow these lots, but not these lots. You know, so why can't we do that with this?'" Well, the Elks matter was a conditional use permit, and it had come before council as a de novo hearing. So a de novo hearing is when you guys have to decide everything on your own as if it was the first time that the matter was ever heard. But this is a different type of hearing. So this is a case where you're trying to make sure that the Planning Commission did their job. They, they looked at the evidence that was needed to be looked at, and they made a decision based on the evidence that was presented to them. So any questions from council on that?
I don't see anyone, and I appreciate that, that introduction by both our Assistant City Manager and our City Attorney. Because I think it helps clarify that while we certainly will allow and hold a hearing and allow public comments tonight, we are not necessarily starting over on the process so much as we are evaluating our Planning Commission's decision. Is that? That's my understanding. Okay, great. Okay, any questions from council so far before we hear from Amy Sharp to present this particular issue? Okay, I'm seeing shaking heads, so I'm going to turn it over to Amy Sharp for her presentation. Thank you.
Okay, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and pointed out, I just wanted to give an overview of the rezone schedule. On May 27th, we had the Planning Commission zoning hearing. On June 1st, we provided an overview of this project to city council at the work session. And then tonight is the city council zoning hearing and the first reading of the zoning ordinance. And then on July 7th would be the second reading of the zoning ordinance. This first map is just a general vicinity map showing you the location of the project. As we stated, this project is located within the estates at Stone Ridge subdivision, which is located in between South Townsend Avenue and Woodgate, and it's also just north of Otter Road. So this is a proposal to rezone lots 1 through 10, 13, 15 through 28, 36 through 56 within the estates at Stone Ridge subdivision. This project site is highlighted here with the yellow outline, as you can see on this map. So specifically, the applicant would like to rezone from this area to the R3 Medium Density District. It's currently R2 Low Density District. In order to be consistent with the surrounding lots in this subdivision, provide setbacks from the current R2 zoning and allow for both single-family homes and duplexes, which are uses by right in the R3. As you can see from this map, this highlights what the surrounding zoning districts are for this area. To the north and immediately to the east, it's currently R3. This is the states at Stone Ridge subdivision. To the west, kind of the northwest and the southwest, we have B2, which is Business District. Directly to the south, we have R1A, and to the east is also R2. So when we determine rezone criteria, we refer to the Municipal Code Section 4429A. So amendments to the official zoning map involving any change in the boundaries of an existing zoning district or changing the designation of a district shall only be allowed upon findings as follows. The amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan. So the Comprehensive Future Land Use Map, Chapter 3, designates this area as residential mixed density low. As you can see to the, on the map to the right, I've highlighted or made this area black, and the black arrow kind of points to where this is, and it's shown as the yellow area. So in the future land use map in the comprehensive plan, this low-density residential land use is intended to preserve the traditional building pattern of the existing residential development in Montrose and will continue to be a predominant density in the city. In addition to single-family homes, this district allows small amounts of attached residential dwelling units, such as duplexes and even small groups of townhomes. So according to Section 447, the intent of the R3 Medium Density District is intended to provide an area which is suitable for single-family homes and duplexes. The district provides for other uses which are compatible with such uses. As I stated in the beginning, one of the purposes or the intentions or the request, I guess, to rezone was to also have a larger building area within this area. So I wanted to include the dimensional requirements, which are found in Section 4422, just as an overview for you. This is also in your packet. R2 is what this area is currently zoned, and you can see here, whoops, sorry. You can see here what the minimum lot size is. It's the 7,500 square feet. The minimum setbacks for the front, rear, and side. And then in the R3, you can see the minimum lot size for single-family homes, as well as R3 All Others would refer to the duplexes, shows the minimum lot size, and then the minimum setbacks for R3, which are 15, 25, and 5, as shown on this chart. So on May 27th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of project number RZ 200024, lots 1 through 10, 13, 15 through 28, and 35 through 56 to be rezoned from R2 Low Density District to R3 Medium Density District, and it was unanimous vote. This following picture is just an overview of the subdivision. For those of you that may be unfamiliar with it, although I think most of you are, it's located. There's a Grace Community Church is located in this area, and then you have Cottonwood Elementary School on the east side of Woodgate Road. The city council did, or we did receive letters from the public in regard to this rezone request. Those letters were included in the packet as Exhibit A. We did receive some additional comments since that packet was submitted last week, and those comments that were received were forwarded to city council today. Staff finds that the proposal does meet the rezone criteria as stated in Section 4429A. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. The proposal does meet the intent of the R3 Medium Density District as stated in Section 447, and it is compatible with the existing uses and surrounding, zoning in the surrounding area. The staff recommends approval of the rezone to R3 Medium Density District. And as Stephen stated, there are three options tonight. You can approve the recommendation. You can deny the recommendation, or the city council on its own motion may schedule the matter for a de novo hearing. And I believe in your packet, I just had the two options for city council options, but there are three options. So I just wanted to clarify that. But then I will turn it over to Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Amy. I was going to screen share your. Okay, can you guys see that PDF there? Talking about traffic.
Yes.
Great. So I wanted to speak a little bit about the traffic elements of this rezoning proposal. Typically, at a zoning level, we don't get too deep into traffic. But because density is involved and density affects traffic, it is relevant at a, at a planning level. The typical process for subdivisions like this, at the subdivision level, they would do a detailed traffic analysis where they look at all the proposed trip generation, where those vehicles are going to go, and the impacts on the, on the street network, because at that time, land uses are known typically. With zoning proposals, land uses aren't known. But, so that's why it's set up that way. In this case, the subdivision is complete, so all the lots are created. They did do a traffic study in that initial subdivision, and that's prompted some of the things you see in front of the subdivision. So the widening of Woodgate with the sidewalk, frontage improvements in front of the subdivision. And then all of the lots within the subdivision also pay, with each lot purchased, they pay towards, into a pot of money to help widen Otter Road at some point. So it's geared towards recognizing the need for those improvements and then contributing towards that. But, so speaking to traffic planning level for this project, I'm going to kind of dive into a couple of traffic analyses we performed. So if anybody's worried of tears, raise your hand and let me know. We can go as much detail as you want, but I'll try and keep it high-flying at this point. So we talked about it at Planning Commission at a, we didn't have any traffic data specific to this reach. The closest data we had were up at the Woodgate Road realignment project down by Walgreens. But because you have quite a bit of traffic coming down, you get a lot of traffic that comes down Woodgate and hangs, turns into Oxbow here, you know, destined for the shopping centers. You know, the, a good chunk of the trip generation that comes down Woodgate does turn onto Oxbow. So we didn't have a really good handle on what's happening in this reach here. So this is, just to orient you, this is the subdivision. This is Otter Pond. This is Cottonwood here. So we went out last week and placed a counter between these two to try and capture what those, get a feel for what those volumes are. There are some limitations to that data given, you know, the state of the world right now, but it does give us a good feel for things, and I'll go into that a little more. But we put counters out on Monday, ran them through Sunday, so about a week of data. We showed 3,200 vehicles per day on that road, and this information wasn't in the packet because we just finished the counts and pulled those out on Monday. So if you did need any of these data, let me know, and I can email them to you. But found 3,200 vehicles per day on the, on that stretch of roadway, which doesn't mean too much. So just to give you a feel for what that looks like, you know, Townsend, South Townsend, our kind of busiest road in town sees 27,000 vehicles per day. For comparison, Hillcrest Drive sees, by the golf course, sees about 8,600 vehicles per day. That's total vehicles per day. The most important number from a design standpoint, looking at traffic capacity, is the peak hour. Looking at what's the highest single hour of volume in a given day. Usually that's at the morning peak. Now, this was actually kind of surprising. There's a pretty sustained traffic volume on this corridor throughout the day, but going through all of those measurements or all of those readings, the highest single hour in the entire week was about 300 vehicles per hour. So conservatively picking that as the representative number. So comparing that to capacity of the roadway. So Woodgate Road, we figure has a capacity of about 1,300 vehicles per hour. Those capacities are derived based on the road classification, acceptable level of service. So, you know, there's, there's just various levels of service based on the amount of delay that's considered acceptable. So there's industry standards on that. If anybody wants to go deeper into that, I'm happy to speak about that too. But, and then the speed limit. So, you know, a road with a faster speed limit can pass more cars than a road with a lower speed limit. But intersections and stuff coming into play at some point too. So comparing that to the 300 vehicles per hour that we're seeing now, you know, dividing those two numbers, the 300 divided by the 1330, we're about 23% of capacity in its current state. Some questions have come up about if this is rezoned and they add more lots at a later date, what would that do to the traffic? So to evaluate that, we look at what kind of trips would be generated by a house or each residential unit. So I'll just blaze over this unless anybody wants to go into it deeper. But essentially, it boils down to for every 50 residential units, about 60 vehicles would be, it would add about 60 vehicles to that peak hour. Looking at as a percentage, that's about four and a half percent. So where we're at 23% now, for every 50 additional units, you would add, you know, four and a half percent on top of that. So generally, we're at the lower end of where this road is from a capacity standpoint at this, at this stage. Couple of things to consider and limitations of this evaluation. School traffic, school's not in session right now. And so Cottonwood has a, has a pretty famous peak hour that, that's probably one of the tougher ones in town, or peak 15 minutes, I guess, mostly related to school pickup. Those do play into a peak hour calculation. They're, they're generally the highest load a road will see. They generally don't, we don't design roads to that peak 15 minutes because they're, they're short. They're not fun, but they're short. Church traffic also plays into it. That was accounted for in these counts. The weekend counts were lower than the weekday counts by about 1,000 vehicles per day. So the weekday count still governs. And then, and then the pandemic. So we kind of, just to see if we're in the neighborhood, this is the mobility data from Montrose County. These are posted on the website or on a public website based on, they do this on cellphone data, but it shows, you know, how much change in movement they've seen, you know, throughout the pandemic. And as you can see, we're kind of back to typical baseline. It doesn't account for tourism and things of that sort. But the pandemic and its traffic, or its effects on traffic are, they're obviously there. We don't know exactly what that number is. Maybe it's 10 to 20%, but, you know, it's not, we're not too far off in that regard. Then a couple of things worth mentioning too are Otter Road. So the subdivision would contribute traffic to Otter Road. Not as much, you know, most of it's going to be bound, northbound for the, going into the heart of the city. But Otter Road is a minor arterial and long-term would be, it kind of falls under our general capital plans to make that a wider arterial and bring it up to arterial standards. And then same thing kind of goes for the Woodgate realignment project. That will likely bring more traffic on to Woodgate Road. That's the project to get rid of the, I don't think this map goes that far, but to get rid of that kind of bottleneck on Townsend where Woodgate dumps right in south of US Bank. We realign that directly to East Oak Grove Road, and it will bring more traffic out of Woodgate by design. So we're trying to alleviate some of the pressures on Townsend. And then that just kind of falls into our general capital planning where we look at volumes and all the roads in town, and that plays into our capital planning to determine where the pressure points are building and prioritize our projects that way. So kind of takeaways, I think, are generally that we're at the low end of the capacity. We do have room to grow in this area. And sorry, I forgot too deep on the detail there, but I'll make sure that everybody was aware of how we came up with those numbers.
Thank you, Scott Murphy. That was really helpful. Appreciate it. Does council, so we'll go with, council have any questions right now for either Scott Murphy or Amy Sharp? So this is our opportunity to clarify any of the information before we talk about the information. Okay. Great. Then I know we have folks from the public who wish to comment and perhaps have presentations with them as well. So here's the idea. We all know how to do this if we were sitting in council chambers. Zoom, we're getting better at Zoom after a couple of months, but, but we haven't had this many people come for comment and do it via Zoom and have them request to make presentations. So I ask everyone for a little patience and kindness. The goal is to let everyone be heard and to go through the list. I can see the request to call on people in a certain order, and there's no reason I can't make that happen. We do generally ask that comments be constrained to three minutes, just so that, it doesn't usually help a matter to hear the, the same thing 50 times, three minutes each. But I understand you guys have some things you want to say, and so I'm going to open it up to public comment. And with that, I think that Ms. Becky Wa is, is kind of first on the list, and I believe Mr. Story has invited her into the conference room. She can unmute herself. And Ms. Wa, if you want to share your screen, I think that's possible as well. Welcome. How are you?
Thank you. Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you great. And if you want to start with your name and address, that would be fantastic. We can hear you great, and if you want to start with your name and address, that would be fantastic. Uh-oh, we lost her, hang on.
There I am, eight fourteen oh one. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I am the first of four residents of Otter Pond who will be addressing you this evening. My husband Jim has kindly yielded his time to me in case my comments exceed the three minute time allotment, but I'll talk fast. First, I would like to acknowledge how important zoning is to the community for both the home buyers and the entrepreneurs. It is frequently a crucial component in their investment decisions. When my husband and I were contemplating purchasing a home in Otter Pond nine years ago, we thoroughly researched the entire area. We noted there was a large planned subdivision directly across Woodgate from Otter Pond. But from the appearance of the few homes already built in Stone Ridge, we believed the entire subdivision would be similar in nature to Otter Pond. We also investigated the large vacant field behind our home to ascertain what future impact its possible development might have on our quality of life. It would seem reasonable that any prospective purchaser of land, especially a large parcel for building homes. Would be cognizant of the zoning that would dictate its developmental potential. My three basic concerns regarding this rezoning request are public safety, traffic and zoning itself. In my view, zoning is the least important of these three, but often has a great impact on the other two. Particularly in populated areas, zoning and traffic are inextricably linked and have a measurable impact on each other. Apparently, from what was said during the Planning Commission meeting for this rezoning request. Montrose has chosen to disregard the importance of viewing these two elements as interrelated, placing zoning before traffic concerns. The concept that traffic may be dealt with after a parcel of land has been zoned, it seems a bit like putting the cart before the horse. For the zoning has given specific rights to individuals and the remedies for any fallout that results from such action. Could be exorbitantly expensive for the community or even non-existent. It seems much more reasonable and prudent to weigh all the possible ramifications of zoning or rezoning decisions when they are discussed. In the case of Stone Ridge, there is no doubt that traffic on Woodgate will increase as the subdivision is further developed, whether it's R two or R three. The real question is what will be the impact of R two versus R three growth in that area? When you look at the map of Stone Ridge, which is in your packets, you will see that the portion south of Cottonwood School is zoned R two. Which makes ultimate sense since the majority of traffic related to those particular homes traversing the southern part of Ridgeline Road. Will be driving past the school. The portion of Stone Ridge, which was zoned R three, is north of the school. And thus, most of the traffic from those homes will not pass the school as residents enter or exit the northern end of Ridgeline Road. Why would the city council sanction the possibility of adding traffic passing Cottonwood School? And thus further exacerbate an already serious traffic problem that consistently occurs twice a day when school is in session. Frankly, the number of cars traveling on Woodgate each day is not the crucial issue. It is the number of cars on Woodgate between Otter Road and Oxbow at peak school traffic times. That prompts our concerns regarding safety. Scott mentioned the recent traffic study done on Woodgate near Otter Pond just last week. Unfortunately, the results are really irrelevant in regard to the rezoning request before you tonight. At this time, the traffic on Woodgate is merely a shadow of its normal self. The COVID shutdown and school closing have eliminated the majority of usual vehicle flow, especially during the peak times mentioned above. Where does the responsibility lie for the traffic congestion and safety issues on Woodgate around the school? This question is somewhat moot as neither the school nor the city currently has a workable resolution for these problems. Twice a day at those peak times, it is not unusual to see southbound vehicles attempting to enter Otter Pond, passing on the right. The stationary line of school-related cars blocking the left turn lane. The visibility is poor, there's also through traffic, and there are children crossing streets at that spot. A dangerous situation for everyone involved. The recent traffic study cannot accurately gauge these conditions as they are all absent during this unprecedented shutdown. The burden in this rezoning issue lies directly with the city council, not the developer of Stone Ridge. It is a stated objective of Montrose zoning regulations not to approve rezoning if health, safety or well-being are endangered. I urge you to abide by your goals and deny this rezoning request. I thank you for your time and David Beard will be speaking next, thank you so much.
However, we can't hear you.
Thank you, I said nice things, I said thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Wa, we appreciate your comments. And we will welcome Mr. Beard into our meeting. And when I see his name pop up, I'll know that he's ready to introduce himself. There it is, great. And I will need, yep, he's unmuted. So David Beard, I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record and then, and then you can proceed with your comments, thank you.
My name is David Beard and I live at nineteen eleven Otter Pond Circle in Montrose. And I'm speaking for a group of six other neighbors, seven being myself. And so I'm asking for nine minutes, you know, for that group. Because what I have to say here has a lot of data to it, is that okay?
Um, sure, I asked that you try and make your points as succinctly as possible. That, you know, you could have gotten a list of a hundred people that would have perhaps signed a petition and, and that still wouldn't be reasonable to give you three hundred minutes. Know that you've worked hard to put together some relevant comments, so that I just ask that you keep on topic and that'll be fine.
Okay, I want to thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight about why the rezoning from R two to R three of the estates at Stone Ridge. Would not help Mr. Coker achieve his goals stated at the Planning Commission hearing on May twenty seventh. David Coker stated his intent is to build one dwelling unit on each lot. However, for purposes of rezoning, Mr. Coker's intention is not legally binding. Once a lot or parcel is rezoned R three, the owner of the property has a use by right and the city must adhere. To its R three zoning definition, which adds the ability to build a duplex on a single lot. Currently, Mr. Coker intends to build one dwelling unit on each lot, but circumstances may change in the future. At some time, he may even decide to sell to another developer who sees the economic benefit. In maximizing one lot with one duplex, which is two dwelling units on one lot, thereby doubling the density. This is why so many of us feel the decision to rezone should not be taken lightly. Mr. Coker asserted many lots are one twenty by one hundred, which is twelve thousand square feet. For consistency, I will use that same size as my example. For an R two zone, he stated the front setback is twenty-five feet and the rear setback is twenty-five feet. Thereby giving him only fifty feet in depth to build a house. He is correct with the front, but not the rear setback. The building code states for an R two zone, the rear setback is only twenty feet, not twenty-five. Thus requiring forty-five feet in total for the front and rear setbacks. This allows Mr. Coker to build a fifty-five foot deep house, not the fifty foot he stated. The side setback requirement is six feet. Mr. Coker stated he needed to rezone to R three because he could not build single-family homes with enough style variation. And was limited by lot size. The building code states the R three zone front setback is fifteen feet and the rear setback is twenty-five feet. All forty-seven lots he wants to rezone have a utility easement within the front twenty feet. So he must begin his construction at twenty feet, not at fifteen. Because of this, forty-five feet of total front and rear setbacks are also required for this R three zone. The side setback requirement is just one foot less at five feet. There is zero benefit to the rezone request since the front and rear setbacks are exactly the same. For R two and R three under this application. So what is the rationale for this change? Included in my packet is the Estates at Stone Ridge filing number two final plat. Which contains all of the lots within the rezone application. Lots seven through ten and lot thirteen have are approximately one fourteen by one oh five feet. I have included a photograph of the home currently under construction on lot seven, highlighted in purple. You can see this large home fits on that lot easily, even with a deeper house front to garage offset. Lots fifteen to twenty-eight are one thirty by one hundred or larger. I have included a photograph of the home currently under construction on lot thirty-one, highlighted in yellow. Which is directly to the west and across the street. That lot size is one thirty by eighty-five, almost two thousand and twenty-five hundred square feet smaller. As you can see, a large home fits nicely on that smaller lot. Lots thirty-five through thirty-nine are smaller in width and are deeper lots, some are irregular in shape. I have included a photograph of the home currently under construction on lot thirty-eight, highlighted in green. And is eighty-two point five by one sixty-one point five feet. The orientation of the garage is sideways in order to fit the house on the narrower lot. As you can see, a very large home fits on that lot. Remaining lots are various shapes and sizes and are equal to or up to sixty percent larger. Than the example Mr. Coker gave using the one twenty by one hundred lot size. As you can see, the forty-seven lots under the zoning change consideration contains square footage. That is well within the size necessary to construct the homes described within Mr. Coker's own website. Cokerhomes.com. This website contain, contains plans for a buyer to select a fifteen hundred to twenty-four hundred and seventy-three. Square foot home with a bonus room. All of those sized homes would fit on these forty-seven lots, most with just a single story. It all comes down to home design based upon lot dimensions. Mr. Coker could easily achieve his goals within the R two guidelines by offering some additional design options. Without creating the potential of increased density as a result of legally changing the zoning of these lots from R two to R three. Which in turn could also foster increased traffic in an already compromised school zone. Mr. Coker is building a beautiful community in our neighborhood. He can achieve the completion of the Estates at Stone Ridge in a manner that will not negatively affect and raise the concern of so many in the immediate area. In conclusion, and for this specific rezoning request, the total front and rear setbacks are exactly the same. For R two and R three zoning. From the examples shown, single-family homes fit easily on the various sized lots. In the northern section of the Estates at Stone Ridge filing number one final plat, which is already zoned R three. The vast majority of lot sizes are considerably smaller than the lots to the mid to southern section. Being considered under the zoning change request. Most lots are just seventy-five to a hundred feet wide. Of those homes already completed or under construction in that northern section, all but four have single-family homes. Built on those much smaller lots. For the city council to consider this request, doesn't there have to be a compelling reason to make the change? From the information I have provided, there is zero justification to accept the request for zoning change. And I respectfully ask you to deny the application, thank you.
Mr. Beard, thank you very much for bringing your comments to council tonight. I believe that Wade Pines would like to also make comments. And so we will get him into our meeting. And when I see him show up and I see that he's unmuted. I will ask him, great, thank you, I will ask you to introduce yourself and state your address for the record. And then you can proceed with your comments, thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you, Wade Pines of eighteen twenty-four Otter Pond in Montrose, eight one four oh one. Uh, thank you for your time and I promise I'll be brief. As a CFO of a local not-for-profit, my mind naturally kind of wandered to the economics of this situation. And the bottom line for me is this is a money thing. Let me start by saying that I am a staunch, staunch supporter of capitalism and I fully support Mr. Coker's rights. To, you know, lawfully pursue his commercial interests. At the same time, I love Montrose and I don't want it to change. Montrose is a popular place and it's not hard to understand why. I moved here from a city of over seven million people and traffic and road quality were some of the top reasons why. Mr. Murphy stated during the Planning Commission meeting on this matter. That traffic has, in his words, exploded over the last two, three years. And none of us have any reason to believe that Montrose is suddenly going to become less popular and that this won't continue. But the, the point is a city's road infrastructure is being taxed by an abundance of traffic. And it's beginning to show through congestion and road damage. And with the utmost respect for Mr. Murphy's work, I believe the, the traffic study data presented this evening may be misleading for a few reasons. The first is just to echo, echo everything Becky Wa said. The second is in the Planning Commission meeting a few weeks ago, Mr. Murphy said that the South Woodgate. Road was at approximately forty-five percent capacity and that was based on data from a twenty seventeen study, which was over three years ago. And so it's difficult for me to reconcile how one could believe that traffic in this area declined so much. While the rest of the community has, in Mr. Murphy's own words, exploded. But as somebody who drives this road every day, under normal conditions, I can tell you Woodgate is in need of expansion. Otter Road is, is dangerous and in need of significant upgrades. And neither one of these are in the, the city's capital plan. And so what you're hearing from me is an abundance of concern that if the Stone Ridge rezoning is approved as it is proposed. And the density of that housing area is able to effectively be doubled, we will be just one on a long list of spending priorities. And I'm concerned that there won't be sufficient funding available to make the necessary improvements, giving all of the other spending priorities that the, the city has. And that's principally why I cannot support the proposed rezoning. Just in closing, I wanted to commend Mr. Scott, Mr. Murphy, sorry Scott. Before the council, he was very responsive to all my questions and he was probably exhausted, but he was very polite and professional at every turn. And I feel fortunate to have him working for our city and so thank you Scott, and again, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pines, for your comments and sharing them with council tonight, appreciate them. Chris Shima, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. Thank you for coming, I see you're here and I see you're unmuted.
Yes, I'm here.
I'll go ahead and say I can hear you, so go ahead and introduce yourself and please include your address for the record.
Thank you, greetings, Madam Mayor and the illustrious City Council of Montrose. My name is Chris Shima, thank you for pronouncing it correctly. I live at two zero two seven Otter Pond Circle in the eight one four oh one zip code. I'd like to thank my, my neighbors in the area for presenting such great facts tonight. And perception into what it's like truly in this area, although it's a wonderful place to live, there are concerns that we do have, as you have heard. But I want to be clear right off the bat that most of us in this area are definitely pro-growth. We love our city, we love Montrose, we want to, we want people to move here. And we know that this area is a very attractive place for people to come for several reasons, the, the home quality. It's proximity to some of the major businesses in the area and of course, Cottonwood School, which is probably the shining gem in the elementary schools for. For Montrose, okay, and we also, I also want to be clear that our concerns are not with Mr. Coker and his vision for Stone Ridge. We love what he's doing over there, we love the homes that he's building, they're, they're beautiful. And, and we, we look forward to what's happening, what's going to happen in the future. But just to restate, you know, Mr. Coker's intention that he had mentioned at the Planning Committee meeting. Is that he wants to put a single residence on a single lot. So essentially one hundred lots, one hundred homes, that's what he bought that, that development for. And we like that plan, we're, we're all on board with that plan, no problem, okay? But we all know that we can't predict the future, okay? Economic situations change, plans change, even land changes hands to different developers. And what we are concerned about is to make sure that there is no abuse of the R three designation if it were to go through. Okay, what we don't want to see is somebody coming in that might take the, take over the area and say, oh, look, they've zoned this R three. I guess I can now put two residences on one lot and thus increasing the density significantly. Okay, we just want to be future thinking and look at the possible unintended consequences that would come with the rezone, okay? Increased density will impact traffic, you've heard it several times tonight. And including, you know, some on your own staff, okay? The crisscrossing of cars is crazy in that one block span of road right there, you know, you have two big housing developments. You have Walmart, you have the rec center, which has just recently gone up, you have a very sketchy turn there at Otter Road. And then, of course, the two churches. And then, of course, the two churches, and then with Cottonwood Elementary, as a school teacher myself, that gives me the greatest concern. I have worked at schools that have this issue where the drop-off and pickup is just insane. And it's not anything that you can prevent. The kids have to be picked up, but in the realm of public safety, this is has, has my greatest concern. There are families walking, there are children walking, and uh, people that don't have kids and they get frustrated, they get reckless with their driving uh, around pickup, and it is not a good situation. So that was something that I would ask the city council to really, really take into consideration. It isn't something that can be measured uh, in the last week, as you've heard before with the counters. Um, it is, it is a, a, a big concern, so. We've clearly shown that the R-three zoning will not give Mr. Coker any additional square foot really for his homes. He can still continue his beautiful plan that he has for that area. There is no compelling reason to change the zoning. Okay, if anything, it will bring possible um, consequences that we don't have versus if we left it the way that it is. Uh, we know that will work. So we ask the city council to please, please, please stick with the original plan for Stone Ridge. And we ask that you deny this proposal. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for sharing your comments with council. Are there additional public comments that um, that would like to speak? I see more people have joined us, so if you're, if you're, if you've joined the meeting and you wish to speak on this agenda item on ordinance twenty-five-zero-three, which is the rezoning in the Estates at Stone Ridge, this is your opportunity. Mr. Coker, did you wish to make comments on this? I didn't, I didn't, oh wait, I see David White has his hand up. Let me, let me do that. And um, Mr. White was not around when we, when we first started, so let me just remind him. Um, we are asking folks to try and limit their comments to three minutes and to not necessarily um, repeat things that have already been said, just in the interest of time. Um, but that being said, can we invite Mr. White into the meeting room so he can make public comment? And Mr. White, you know the drill, but can you please start by introducing yourself and providing your address for the record? Thank you.
Yes, uh, David White, eighteen-twenty-three Otter Pond Circle. Um, I'll just make this brief. When this development was originally um, platted and zoned, I was on city council. And we had similar discussion with residents of Otter Pond. Um, I had to recuse myself because I was a resident and the city attorney at the time uh, recommended that. I don't, Mr. Anderson's on this Zoom meeting, so um, I don't know, things are different today, I guess, but nonetheless, um, a lot of this discussion revolve-
Mr. White, you, your mic all of a sudden got muted, sorry.
Development.
We, Mr. White, we lost you at all of this discussion revolves around. At that point, your mic was muted, so can you-
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, somebody was trying to call me, but anyway, um, just simply put, uh, fifteen years or so ago, um, we as the council then um, decided that the R-three zoning on the north end of the Stone Ridge Estates uh, would make a good buffer. It made sense uh, as a transition uh, from R-two. Uh, given that there you know, the commercial development with Walmart and so on were uh, to the north. Um, I, I just, for the record, I believe that the original zoning needs to stay the way that it was for all of the reasons that been stated and more. This is just a rehash. Um, and unless somebody wants to dump a lot of money into traffic control, you can barely get in and out of Otter Pond and Stone Ridge when school's in session with the traffic in the morning and the afternoon. And this is only going to exacerbate the problem, so um, I'd just like to voice my opinion that this should not be approved. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing your comments with council tonight. Um, is there anyone else on the list of attendees? You can raise your hand and that way we can let you in to the meeting. It says someone has their hand up, but I don't see them. That must- Mr. Story, am I missing something?
It's uh, Mr. Coker over on the uh, analysts.
On this side of the, got it. I see now. Thank you very much, um, David Coker. Um, I will ask you also to introduce yourself. Please state your address for the record and uh, to keep your comments as you can, as brief and on point as possible tonight. Thank you.
Uh, it's David Coker, address twenty-three forty-two Stone Bridge Drive. And I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to speak. Um, we presented all this at the planning, and I want to just reiterate a little bit of what has transpired. So this, this development was in uh, two thousand and five. And the north half, which was about forty-five lots, were zoned R-three. Meaning that all this time, that R-three could have been or could have had uh, duplexes all built on one lot. So when we took the, the place over two years ago, there were ninety lots left, of which thirty-five were still zoned R-three. We had no intention of putting two lots on a ninety-three-hundred square foot lot to begin with. What we did have was a, a chance to put duplexes on those lots, one per lot. Everybody still owns their lot. What we wanted to do was connect them at the garage, and the reason being is it allowed us to go in and do common maintenance, uh, landscaping, lawn care, snow removal, and do it through a sub-association. So in that time, we've built four duplexes, but we've also uh, we've added thirty-three homes to the subdivision. All, most, well, all but three are in the R-three designation, of which we have put one home, one lot. What we had proposed was to change the zoning, and part of this is because when we bought the subdivision, we were looking at phase one, phase two had not been uh, plat- final platted yet, and we just, you know, through my own fault, just assumed that the whole subdivision was R-three. So we didn't give it any thought at the time. We just felt that everything was all the same. When we uh, and then recently we've realized that it was R-two, which would eliminate us from developing any more duplexes from the standpoint of what we've done on lots ninety-six through ninety-nine, which is connect them at the garage, one lot, one unit. So we haven't changed our criteria for that. If my understanding is correct, we cannot do that under an R-two. We have lots, uh, we have ten lots identified on the south end in a cul-de-sac called Keller Court, I believe. And those lots are designated, or what we were designating for uh, duplexes, again, connected at the garage. The rest of this, we've uh, we've been building homes. They've all been single-family detached. We've had no desire to change the density, but we, my understanding again is that we cannot change the R-two, or we can't uh, change our setbacks on an R-two to get the garages connected at the, at the garage, or the units connected at the garage. So my request was, and I ask again tonight, that we be granted that we're, we're not interested in changing the dynamics of this. We want to change the market in the sense that we have clients that want that duplex scenario where it's a lock and leave. They can, we take care of everything. And we're structured to do it on a duplex setting, and it needs to be R-three to do it. But thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much for your comments and bringing them to council tonight. I'll go back to attendees. I see another hand up, I believe. David Beard, again. Uh, we usually don't have people making two comments, Mr. Beard, but I guess we'll go ahead and invite you in. A follow-up perhaps? Keep it brief.
Yes, just based on uh, what I heard, uh, the first thing is, is that northern section that Mr. Coker is referring to, he was saying that he could put duplexes on those lots, but a lot of those lots were seventy-five feet wide. You can't get a duplex on a seventy-five-foot wide lot with garages and everything like that too. So uh, he, he basically was forced to, to create that uh, midline section and join two lots together in essence, in order to make the duplex. And so that's the number one, that I don't think is an accurate statement. Um, that he, he really couldn't put duplexes on those seventy-five-foot wide lots, but they were zoned that way. Because uh, as David White said, uh, they probably wanted to get everything past the school since people were going in a northern direction. And then the other thing is, is that he's saying that he, uh, Mr. Coker stating that he uh, did not realize that it was an R-two until later, and you know, um, that's, he said he was a little surprised by it at the planning commission meeting. But he was one of three builders who had built homes for S.R. Montrose, the previous owner, in the northern R-three section specified as the Estates at Stone, Stone Ridge filing plat number one. And they recorded uh, the filing of the number two final plat, which is what we're talking about now for the rezone. Um, and uh, he, uh, and that was, that was recorded on April second, twenty-nineteen. And so on April thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, he paid two-point-two-nine-one million dollars for the Estates at Stone Ridge. And my guess is it was final platted as part of a sale condition, since those events occurred within the same month. So how he could not know something as important as the uh, zoning of a subdivision that he was purchasing to develop homes on is quite interesting, and so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, that doesn't, I mean, okay. I, I, you know, I don't want this to just be a back and forth, and he said this and he said that. So I, I'm going to ask that we leave kind of comments to be generated towards council and less about finger pointing. Um, that being said, I, I feel like it's only fair, since you did that, to allow Mr. Coker. If he, if he wants to make a response, I want to allow him to. I certainly am not asking him or telling him he has to, but I feel it only fair to allow him the floor.
Thank you. Uh, there's really not much to discuss. There was um, when we bought it, it was just an assumption on our part. We did not bring it, Mr. Beard, up to uh, the city, the planning commission at that point. I knew it was an R-two, but it was after I purchased it, and it didn't change the fact that we were going to purchase it. It just changed the fact that it changed our setbacks uh, in connecting the garages. So that was our whole intent all along was to be allowed to build uh, duplexes. And so, yeah, it was an oversight on our part. It wasn't going to change the world one way or the other, but once we realized there was a market for the, that connected at the garage, that's what we wanted to pursue, and we've outlined ten lots to do so. So, and I mean, I appreciate everybody knowing that I spent apparently two-point-three million dollars on this place, but uh, always good to know. That's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have additional folks who haven't had a chance to make a comment yet that are interested in making a public comment before council seeks additional information and debates this? I don't, I don't see any. So I'm going to kick it off with a question for Amy Sharp about the planning commission process. When the planning commission reviewed this, did, did they, were they clear that by changing the zoning, um, no matter what Mr. Coker says his intent is, that they would be rezoning all of those lots to allow a duplex on a single lot? Was the planning commission, do, are you able to speak to if they understood that?
Yes, I can, thank you. Um, they were given almost the identical presentation that you see here today. So they did know that by rezoning this to R-three, that both single-family homes and duplexes were used as by right for that entire zoning area were to be rezoned as R-three.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, I see Counsel Frank has a question or a comment.
Yeah, I have a question for Amy as well. Um, so with the setback, is a possibility to apply for setback variance to allow the joint uh, garage on an R-two setting?
The duplexes are not a use by right in R-two, so they have to rezone first to R-three, and then we can address the setback issue to be zero, so they can do the side-by-side. So this was brought forward to us, you know, as their request is what their intent was, and we said that in order to do that, we had to rezone first to R-three in order to allow the duplexes as a use by right.
Thank you for the clarification.
So are you saying that um, a use by right for duplexes in the R-two um, still requires a variance in order to do the zero setback? I mean, because you could put a duplex with two units on one property, but to do duplex where it's two properties and two units, you would need a variance for that setback?
So, yeah, I think, I know what you're saying, but I think you said R-two. So they're doing the R-three zoning to allow the duplex. And then if they want the zero-foot side setback in order to do the side-by-side houses as he's described, it won't be a variance, but it's a Anne might have to correct me on this if I get it right, but it's, I think it's, ah, what was that called? Administrative PD plan, is that correct, Anne? Okay. Zero side setbacks for those side-by-side units.
Thank you very much. Additional council uh, clarification questions or comments, thoughts? Uh, Counsel Frank.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious to all of our listeners if uh, Mr. Murphy's presentation tonight cleared up some of the issues and, and questions on the, um, I hope it did on there, but I, I, I do share that same hesitation with the increased traffic during school hours, since our traffic study took place when we uh, did not have school in session because of the pandemic. Amy, is there a possibility that that increased traffic during school hours will negatively impact that region?
So, Mr. Murphy, I think that's a question for you.
Yeah, and we're, and we're fully aware of those limitations and, and, yeah, just quickly spoke to them. The um, kind of intent is to show, you know, these aren't detailed traffic analyses. A detailed traffic analysis would include counts at every intersection. They actually run simulations of all the intersections, all the side streets. It was kind of meant to demonstrate about where we are. Um, so peak uh, uh, school traffic would probably add about a hundred vehicles. Um, roughly, we don't have numbers on that. Um, again, we're kind of just looking at with the amount of data, or the limited data we do have, what conclusions can we draw? Um, and showing that we're far enough away from the capacity was, was just kind of trying to give a feel for where we're at. So, um, you know, if we're at three hundred, um, and that went to four hundred, so that's another twenty-five percent increase on top of that um, for that, you know, fifteen-minute interval. Um, and, and we don't disagree. I mean, the, the school drop-offs um, and pickups are, you just, you just can't hang left during, during that period. It's just, um, and that's, that's a lot of the schools in town also, and that's, it's a pretty combination.
So, Mr. Murphy, when the planning commission, because one of the things we're just determining here tonight really is if the planning commission did their, did their job correctly essentially. Did the planning commission ask questions or hear traffic data when they were making their decision?
Yeah, and that's where that forty-some percent number came from. Um, so at, at that time, the only data we had were from the traffic study we did for the Woodgate realignment at the northern end. Um, so those, based on the counts we had there, um, we took an educated guess, a conservative educated guess on what they would be at the southern end, so we assumed it would be um, five thousand ADT, uh, vehicle, or five thousand vehicles per day, average vehicles per day. Um, you know, those counts demonstrated thirty-three hundred, so, um, you know, reality is probably between those two. Um, so you're between the, you know, the twenty percent and the fifty percent capacity, I think is a, a reasonable bound for that. Um, and then, you know, you can put a little school on top of that.
So you're saying that the planning commission considered the traffic, considered those numbers that you had, and if anything, they were slightly higher than the numbers that you're presenting to us tonight?
That's correct, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Glossel, I saw your hand, and then I think out of this corner of my eye, I saw some additional hands, so we'll go through, but you have the floor.
Just a couple items for clarification. There is no exit out of this subdivision onto Otter Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
Also, um, for Scott, has there ever, but would there ever been any uh, consideration given for putting uh, stoplights up near the school to help control that flow of traffic?
That question does come up from time to time. Um, so stoplights have uh, warrants associated with them. Um, it's pretty rare to see them uh, in front of a school entrance, um, for the reason that they're so short. Um, so although it's a really heavy loading, it's a really short, relatively short duration. Um, for signals to be warranted by established standards, they have to meet an eight-hour volume warrant, um, pretty consistently, um, which school entrances generally don't. So, um, in those kind of cases, it's usually a lot more cost-effective. If it's that bad to have- If it's that bad to have like uniformed traffic control or someone goes out and actually, you know, halts traffic in that regard, we, some schools do that, but not here in Montrose. But because they sit vague, they sit idle, you know, all the other hours of the day.
Yeah, it's just a, an estimate. What would your guess be before we would be looking at doing an upgrade to Woodgate Road through that area?
Um, so it's, the road right in front of the product area is pretty decent because of those half width improvements that they did. So it has a sidewalk, a through lane in each direction, and then the center turn lane. I think it's really lacking or formalized by, I think the sidewalks continue on the other side of the street also. So it's, it's pretty close to our standards already. I think the bigger pinch point would be Otter Road. And, and then, long term, we did have plans for extending or widening Woodgate down further, but the, the volumes just aren't there. Once you get past Otter, all that's really left is that localized traffic. And you get, I think we do get some shortcutting traffic that comes through of people coming north on US fifty looking to avoid the lights, or five fifty, looking to avoid the lights and peeling off at Woodgate way down south where it joins the highway. But we're a way off for, you know, compared to other, we have, we have a forty plus million dollar capital backlog. You know, so compared to other priorities, the blind in here are relatively low.
Yes, my other question would be for Mr. Coker. Do you have any feel for what your build out would be on this facility?
Uh, it's a good question. So when we took this subdivision over and started building there in two thousand seventeen, there were ninety available lots. As of today, there are forty three homes either under construction or sold. So we have fifty seven left. And right now, we're running at a pace of about twenty homes a year, between twenty and twenty five, you know, given the market, if it sustains. So we had planned on being out of here in two to three years, you know, minus some infill.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Anderson and then Counsel Bowman. So we'll do it in that order because that's how I saw it.
Okay, I want to address these comments to my colleagues on City Council and also to Mr. Alcorn. As you all know, I live in Otter Pond. I do not live in the estates at Stone Ridge. And when I first heard that there was some neighborhood concern, it was from the lady who writes our neighborhood newsletter. And I told her right away, I said, please don't include me in the newsletter. And please tell residents not to talk to me about this subject because it will create an ex parte conversation, and then I have to recuse myself. And I have to say that the neighbors respected that. No one, whether they live in Otter Pond or any other part of the city, has had any conversation with me regarding this rezoning. That being said, I would offer to recuse myself if any of my colleagues feel that that's appropriate or Mr. Alcorn thinks I should.
Recusal is a decision that is up to the individual and council. The, from what you have said, it doesn't sound like any that your position is affected one way or another by where you live. You haven't gotten any more information than any of the other counselors. But then, so I would say it's up to you and council to make that decision. And if other counselors have an opinion on that, I would, would think it would be wise to respect that. But, you know, it's a council decision when you have, when you have a need for recusal.
Okay, so I, I haven't seen anything that wasn't in the packet or that I heard tonight. But if anyone on council thinks I should recuse, I'd be happy to. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to say, Barbara.
Okay, great. And, and I think I'll follow up on your comments just because I think folks know I live the other direction from you, from this subdivision, and would agree that I think folks know that we can't talk about this sort of thing. And they haven't approached me, and I have no additional information further than any other counselor does. And I feel like that my decision tonight would not be impacted by how close I live. But again, if other counselors feel that either Mr. Anderson or myself is not able to make a fair decision, please speak up. Mr. Bowman, you had some comments you wanted to make as well. So I'll turn it over to Counsel Bowman.
Thank you. Counsel is certainly aware we have a housing crisis in this community. I don't know the price point that Mr. Coker is going to be charging for his houses. I assume that between a duplex and a very nice single family home, there's quite a spread. The job of the planning commission, the way I understand it, is to look at the master plan of our community and the needs of our community. And again, everybody's aware that if Montrose is going to grow and be able to provide housing for lots of different people at lots of different jobs, we need a variety of housing. My guess is the planning commission looked at this plan. I think it's very creative. It meets a lot of the needs of this community and our citizens and reflected upon how we can best address the housing crisis. And we really haven't seen a lot of good options. I view what Mr. Coker is bringing to us, again, as creative and something that will meet the needs of our community. And I think the planning commission looked at that, and right now I have no problem with the planning commission's decision.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bowman. Any additional comments or we'll kind of start moving into the, you know, stating your thoughts phase of this council discussion? Any fellow counselors want to speak up? I, I go back to looking at what, how a rezoning is decided by our planning commission and how they look at the land nearby, and they look at the master plan. And they don't take into consideration a promise by, oh, wait, let me back up. They take into consideration the health, wellness and safety. They take into consideration the master plan, and they take into consideration surrounding parcels and how those are zoned. And that, but I think the planning commission did their due diligence in doing those things in regard to their recommendation. I think that we would have to find that they really screwed it up and didn't follow the laws, didn't follow the master plan, didn't follow any adjacent zoning and made a decision that made absolutely no sense in over to, in order to overturn a planning commission decision. So we're not, in my opinion, we're not really being asked, how would we have voted if we were on the planning commission? We're being asked to say, did the planning commission do their job with all due diligence? And those are, those are slightly different things, honestly. I, I see them as slightly different things. And I don't, I think the planning commission that we asked to do this kind of work did their job in this case. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to accept their recommendation. And, and I feel like that's, that's the right thing to do in this case. I saw some head nodding, so feel free to speak up and either disagree or, or have another way to look at it.
No, I agree with you.
Mr. Bowman?
I'm sensing that council's coming together here. Unless there's an objection, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty five zero three on first reading.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Bowman. We have a second by Mr. Glassbell. And we usually don't at this point accept a public comment. I see there's someone in the attendance who's raising a hand. Mr. Alcorn, do we, usually we have a public comment period, and then we move on. Can you give me any legal advice here?
The public hearing was closed once the, either, you know, wasn't from the bench, but by the mere fact that it went to city council comments, that the public hearing was closed on the matter. I'll point out on a matter like this, it isn't required to even have a, a public hearing. So I think that the community had a wonderful opportunity to express their concerns and clearly communicate to council their wishes of this matter.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that by virtue of the fact that I'm trying to make our Zoom meetings as closely replicate what we would have if we were in council chambers. And if we were in council chambers, I think it would be very clear because I would have had a gavel, which they don't provide me when I'm sitting in the corner of my bedroom, that the public comment period was over. So I'm, I'm trying to make sure people get heard, but I'm also trying to follow our regular procedures. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, I will ask, I will ask our deputy city clerk, Michaela Unruh, to call for a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Maribynum, that's a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. And I'll thank our planning commission for their hard work. And a lot of times, they are the ones who really are on the hot seat. But I feel like because they aren't elected, that they, they really do do their, their best work without paying attention to political winds of the intent of the city ordinances and the intent of the city master plan and zoning. And it is a, a hard job, and I want to thank our planning commission for their work. Okay, moving on, the next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, which is council consideration of a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the city of Montrose pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Anne Morgan Baylor to explain what that means. We know because we heard about it at work session, but for the public.
Thank you very much. Council did indeed hear about this at work session, and we were fortunate to have a representative from CHAFA join us. And when I say CHAFA, I'm talking about the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And that's an entity within Colorado that helps the entire state with affordable housing. And in the past, well, I'll start by saying that every year, the city of Montrose is allocated what we call P A Bs, but these are private activity bonds. And it's a bonding authority that the city of Montrose has. This year, the allocation that we have is just over a million dollars. And the city of Montrose chooses historically not to actually act as a bond issuer because there's risk associated with that and also administrative burden. But in order to make sure that that bonding authority benefits our community, the past several years, we've allocated those bonds to CHAFA. And CHAFA in turn can allocate them either to projects, to specific projects, or to other programs that promote affordable housing. And last year, the city of Montrose allocated them to CHAFA. And they were used to support a low income housing development that was proposed in the Colorado outdoors. So that's an example of the city council allocating the bonds to CHAFA for a specific project. At the May eighteenth work session, you heard from the representative from CHAFA who is proposing that, again, the city of Montrose allocate these P A Bs to CHAFA. But this time, she's proposing that it would support its homeownership program called First Step. And these bonds would support this program here in Montrose to help people purchase homes. And so this would be an excellent opportunity to put those bonds to use in Montrose without the city taking on any of the risk or administrative burden associated with perhaps working directly with a developer who might want to access this bonding authority. If you choose to approve the resolution, you would vote to approve it. And then administratively, we'd work with CHAFA on the allocation process.
Great, thank you very much. We talked about this at a work session and got a lot of clarification. We're not giving up something that we would otherwise be able to monetize. Does any council have any further follow up questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve Resolution, so we're going to find it here, twenty, two twenty twenty dash eleven, as presented.
I will second it.
Great, we've got a, a motion and a second. So I will turn it over to our deputy city clerk for a vote.
All right, Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Maribynum, that is a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on our agenda tonight is funding for restaurant voucher program, which is city council consideration and allocation of funds from the existing small business emergency response fund for the Help for Hope program administered by the Montrose Community Foundation to distribute restaurant vouchers based upon financial need. And I am going to turn this over to our citizen engagement specialist, Bethany Maher.
Hello, counsel. Bethany Maher, Community Engagement Specialist. And I'll give a brief presentation on the restaurant voucher program. And I'll start by just giving a little bit of history. We had discussed, or council had discussed this restaurant voucher program at the June first city council work session. And we had discussed the idea of doing a voucher program administered through the Montrose Community Foundation and their Help for Hope program. So staff is proposing that city council allocate up to twenty five thousand dollars for this program or whatever amount that you feel is appropriate and to the Montrose Community Foundation. And staff is also recommending that this funding, as previously discussed, come from the already budgeted Small Business Emergency Response Fund. And in the memo, it does say eighty thousand dollars. It's missing a one. So there's actually a hundred and eighty thousand dollars left in that fund, the last I know. And Shane can correct me if that has changed since then. And there's a possibility also that this funding could be reimbursable through the DOLA Coronavirus Relief Fund that I believe Kendall Kramer will be discussing shortly. And so certainly, there's a possibility, but, but we would have to ask Kendall and possibly DOLA a little bit more about that possibility. And additionally, the Montrose Community Foundation would give unique identifying numbers and would be able to track the city's contribution and the cards that are redeemed through the city's part of this program. And each card would feed a family of four, and it's worth fifty dollars to each business that participates, and it's redeemed. The current program is distributing cards to frontline workers, healthcare workers, nursing homes, a lot of different workers who are kind of working on the front lines of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And the city's cards would primarily go to those who are in need of food and financial assistance. And staff would work with the Montrose Community Foundation to identify and distribute those cards and based on the amount of money that the city council wishes to allocate to this program.
Great, thank you very much. Any additional council comments or questions about this program? Mr. Anderson?
I have a comment. I, I was thinking about making a motion, but before I do that, I'd kind of like to get my colleague's opinion. I think the need is great. I, I can't quantify it. But I think we should consider a number greater than twenty five thousand. We have quite a bit of funds that are left, as Bethany said, I think you said a hundred and eighty thousand. What if we doubled this and let's say made it fifty? I, I'm sure it's going to go where it's needed. I really trust the Montrose Community Foundation. And so that would be my thought. I'd like to hear what the rest of you think.
Mr. Bowman, it looks like you want to chime in.
Thank you. I agree with you, Mr. Anderson, totally. I do have a question for Mr. Bell, please. There was discussion, I guess at the work session, things run together, about possibility of the federal government supplying money for our budget due to COVID nineteen. Do we have any clarification yet, Bill, on, on what will be reimbursed, what won't be reimbursed? Can you, are you in a position to comment on that? Can you, are you in a position to comment on that?
Yeah, we haven't had much more, uh, than we knew about at the work session. Uh, first step would be for the application to get approved that was sent in and have the exact dollar amount that comes to Montrose County, including the city of Montrose. And then we'll know exactly what we're working with. But reading through all that, it looks like this would be the type of thing that, um, our team, Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong. Our interpretation is this would be something that would fit into that niche. It's COVID-related. It's directly impacting citizens who have been negatively affected by COVID. And, uh, fits right in with the parameters of, of those guidelines.
And it wasn't budgeted before, so.
And it wasn't budgeted as of March twenty seventh, or, yeah, March, in March, it wasn't budgeted, twenty seventh to the twenty-third, off the top of my head.
So there is possibility for federal reimbursement on this?
That's our understanding currently.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Um, Councilor Frank?
Uh, for a full disclosure, I am on the board of the Montrose Community Foundation. It is an unpaid position. Um, the original in, uh, idea behind the, the Help for Hope Program was to provide a kind of a thank you for the frontline workers. In our discussions with the executive director of the community foundation, they have been willing to expand this program to do exactly what we've been discussing right here. And to expand this program to helping those who are actually a little bit more needy. The still, the core value of this is to help our local restaurants as well as helping our local, uh, needy people that are in, in a food crisis. So I would fully support, uh, Councilor Anderson's suggestion to double that to fifty thousand.
Thank you. I, I like that idea, but this is a new program, and there's nothing that would stop us from coming back in two weeks or four weeks and, and allocating an additional twenty-five thousand. Um, I, I think that we should follow, I mean, my opinion is to follow staff's recommendation at this point of twenty-five with the possibility that we come back and allocate more money. If we see that the program was really successful, well-received, the cards were given out, the cards were used, the restaurants appreciated them. I just don't think there's any, um, thing to stop us from giving out more if we see that it works. Mr. Glassbell?
I agree with that. I, I think that programs like this can get a little out of hand or can be misused at times. So I think this, by, by doing it maybe in two sections, uh, it gives us a little better ability to make certain that it is working as intended, and it's not being misused in some way.
Mr. Frank?
Uh, Bethany, what do you think about the idea of doubling that amount? Would staff support this, or do you feel that we should go ahead and then do it twenty-five thousand and then come back later on? What's your, what's your take on that?
Well, I would say, uh, twenty-five thousand would get us five hundred family, or five hundred cards, I believe. Yeah. So, um, you know, that's two thousand meals. Um, and, you know, if you double that, you know, we're at a thousand cards and, um, four thousand um, meals. So I think really it just depends on what your, um, your hope is for the impact. Um, I think we can easily identify, uh, folks who are in need at either amount, really. Um, so I, I mean, I really think that's, it's up to city council, and I think, um, if you increase the amount up to fifty thousand dollars, we could disperse the funds to the Montrose Community Foundation in t- uh, twice, um, up to that amount. So we wouldn't have to give the full fifty thousand dollars upfront. And we could wait and see that they get used and that they're being redeemed, and then do a second round if you wanted to do it that route. And we could do it kind of a number of ways, um, if you approve the larger amount today too, without, um, with the ability to kind of, um, not expend all of it if not needed.
Does the city have the ability to help designate where those cards go?
Um, yes. So I, I, I would propose that staff work with the Montrose Community Foundation on identifying, um, those partner organizations to distribute them.
I like that we're seeking the community foundation's expertise in that regard. Mr. Bowman, I saw your hand a second ago.
I, I'd like to try to propose a motion. There's gonna be some verbiage here that, that would need to be worked out. I just wanted, if council's ready for that, I'm willing to talk, but if not, go.
We're gonna call for public comment first, so hang tight for one second. Um, I think, um, we always ask for public comment on stuff, and I think we have a hand raised tonight. So I would ask Mr. Story's help in, um, in letting Mr. Damon into the room. And again, for the record, Mr. Damon, to introduce yourself for the record, and then, um, we'll entertain your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you got the difficult part of the evening out of the way. Um, Scott Damon, I have not moved since six oh five P M. The, uh, related to this, you know, we, we certainly have a feel-good story that, that is important. And it helps the needs of many families in one business category. I think city council needs to be very careful about selecting a certain business category at the expense of others. Uh, and this is also a business category that was able to actually do business, some sort of business in March, April, and May. Of course, I know it's gonna be a five to zero vote. But what continues to not be addressed are the daily needs of working-class Montros, which you all know is eighty percent of this community. The twenty twenty year brought us in a lot of stuff, including an eighteen percent city sales tax increase to a city with a median income of less than twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'm gonna come back on food, but the reason why I mention that is please keep in mind the real impact. Please keep in mind the real impact you can empower to help average working-class Montrose family of four that now pays five hundred dollars a year in city sales tax when that family buys groceries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Anderson, did I see your hand? No? Okay. Mr. Glassbell, I see your hand.
I think in response to the, the question that we just received, I think that, that is an interesting point. However, two things come to my mind when we're providing some meals to these people. It does enhance the number of employees, I believe, that are probably going to be, uh, having jobs in, in the restaurant or food business. So I think it's, it sort of does go beyond just the persons who are receiving the card. It does, does feed on down the line. So I think that's, that's a great help in this respect. The other, uh, piece of that would be, I think that, uh, are we looking at just persons within the city of Montrose? And Dave, maybe you can answer that question. Or are we looking at any persons that the, the foundation would be helping?
Currently, the community foundation's scope is the Montrose region. So it is not limited to the city of Montrose. So, uh, anywhere in the, basically in the valley. So there's a good case to be made for a s- specific location. It is supported by the community foundation.
Well, I think, I think that's a good point, and most of those folks do find this area for shopping. So I think that anytime we're providing them, uh, some food allotment to assist them, an opportunity to get out, it also provides them with funds to purchase other items that they might need. So I, I think it's a good program.
I appreciate your comments, Mayor Proton, because I do think that we, we try very hard not to distinguish between city residents and folks who live outside of the city limits, um, in, in allowing public comment. We do have to require addresses, but we don't um, weigh comments any differently from people who live in the city and who don't. Um, when we solicit, um, people to participate on boards and commissions, um, as long as, as we try to expand that circle. So I think along with those lines, knowing that our sales tax revenue comes from the greater community, I really don't have any qualms about this program benefiting the greater community. Any, yeah, sorry.
If we make a, a motion on this, uh, to do up to the fifty thousand, can we set that up as we start out with twenty-five and let staff make those decisions on the second piece of that, or do we need that to come back to council?
I think that is what, uh, Counselor Bowman has been considering how to word that exactly. I believe he wants to make a motion and has been thinking about the best way to word that. But along those lines, you know, we do have additional money, and I think we're open to other ideas. We've been giving loans to small businesses. We've been, um, letting small businesses defer their sales tax payments. We've been giving out cooperative marketing grants. Um, we've worked with individuals who needed more time to pay their utilities. Um, so I think we're open to other ideas. And if Mr. Damon or anyone else listening wants to come and, and has an idea for something that we can, um, either partner with an organization or work on, I think we're open to all the different ways that we can help our community during this time. That being said, Mr. Bowman, I, I get the feeling you're ready.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding for Restaurant Voucher Program with the caveat that a report is given to council within forty-five days or with the expenditure of the total twenty-five thousand dollars, whichever comes first.
We have a motion?
So are you suggest, or is your motion for twenty-five thousand for, for the full fifty to be divided?
No, it's for, it's for twenty-five thousand. We get a report within forty-five day or? Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just.
Uh, you need to turn off. Thank you very much. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No problem. Um, it's for the twenty-five thousand with a report to council in forty-five days or when that twenty-five thousand dollars runs out, whichever comes first.
I mean, okay, I followed you. Um, is there anyone willing to second that motion?
Well, I'll second it. Uh, we get to have some discussion.
Absolutely. So we have a motion and a second, so now there's time for discussion.
I guess my, Dave, um, are you, do we need to amend that if, or do we have to come back and, and vote for the second twenty-five? What was your intent on that?
My, my intent is that if in forty-five days, the twenty-five thousand hasn't been completely spent, we will know that and we can adjust our thoughts at that point. If in thirty days, that twenty-five thousand dollars is already spent, we will know that and we can address that issue at that point.
So you, you're basically saying, well, as long as we're monitoring, if we run out of money, we can re, refill the conference on it.
We'd have to vote. We'd have to vote, but we could.
Oh, of course. Yeah. Yes.
Um, Councilor Frank?
The question I would have is, uh, if we run out of money, we're gonna have to bring this back again before a council. We're gonna have to do another presentation. We're gonna have to do another mo- another, uh, uh, mo- motion on the entire process, redo the entire thing. Where if we may amend the motion to fifty thousand to with the caveat that the tw- first twenty-five thousand has to be spent within thirty days in order to allocate the second twenty-five thousand, that would give us the flexibility to not have to come back and redo this entire thing.
I don't think it's a big deal to come back, and it also allows us to entertain other ideas that might come forward, um, other programs that we can support, honestly.
And I think it also provides us with a, an account, a, a vehicle for accountability to our community that here's what we've authorized as financially, here's where it is, here's what we want to do next.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask for roll call vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
And Mayor Bynum, that is a unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you. Um, we still have more of our meeting. We haven't hit two hours yet. I'm gonna keep going. Um, I feel like if we, if I thought we were gonna be going too much longer, I might ask if we needed a break. Um, I'm gonna, okay, I'm seeing at least one no. Just keep this going. Okay. I'll, I will keep us going. Um, this is great. We're gonna move on to item ten, which is memorandum of understanding with Montrose County to apply for DOLA Coronavirus Relief Funds. Ah, this is that federal cares money. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to our grant coordinator, Kendall Kramer, to tell us how that works.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum. Thank you, city council. Before you tonight, I have a M O U, uh, with the, with Montrose County, um, to opt into the program for the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is through the Federal Cares Act. Uh, this is federal money through the U S Treasury, uh, that's been allocated to the state of Colorado. Uh, DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, is managing two hundred and seventy-five million dollars of the state's allocation from the Cares Act, um, and they are responsible for distributing that money. Uh, based on their funding formula, each county in the state of Colorado receives a certain allocation based on per capita population, for the exception of a couple counties up near Denver, uh, that receive a direct allocation from the U S Treasury. Um, based on that, the counties and the municipalities and the state, uh, must come to an agreement on how to distribute those funds. Uh, here in Montrose County, the allocation is three point six million dollars, uh, the exact number, three million, six hundred eighty-eight thousand and fifty-five dollars. The proposed M O U before you tonight, which will also be, uh, considered by the towns of Olathe, Nupla, Naterita, and Montrose County, proposes to split up this allocation based on per capita population. Based on that, Montrose or the city of Montrose would get one million, one hundred thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Uh, again, these are reimbursement funds, um, so we will have to submit invoices and receipts. Uh, these funds, uh, the expenses must have incurred, been incurred between March first of twenty twenty and December thirtieth of twenty twenty. And on that note, um, from yesterday, the M O U has been updated by one day to reflect DOLA's guidelines, uh, for the end term date of December thirtieth instead of December thirty-first of this year. So there is one minor change with that. Uh, the Corona virus refunds can be used for multiple purposes. Uh, the purposes that have been stated thus far are for medical, public health, uh, expenses, payroll expenses, uh, including some, it seems to be some exempt employees and hourly employees. Uh, if they've been substantially dedicated to the response, we have a number of employees at the city who have, uh, been substantially dedicated, including our police chief, number of people at O B T, our community engagement specialists, and so forth. Um, other expenses include, uh, related to mitigating and responding. So there's expenses for, um, porta potties, for example, were brought up. Those seem to be, uh, would be able to be reimbursed for those expenses at the parks. Um, also the provision of economic support and other reasonable expenses, it states. Um, economic support, it does sound like, um, based on our interpretation, that the, the voucher program might be eligible, um, as well as if there was interest in creating another loan program or even possibly reimbursing those loans. Although at the time, there is some uncertainty with, uh, the directives and the guidance from the treasury on exactly what can be spent. Um, and then we mentioned that yesterday, that, um, council, uh, will want to have very firm directions from DOLA to make sure that we don't get in a situation where we spend funds and can't be reimbursed for them. Um, on that note, the expenses for just supplies and materials to date are around forty thousand dollars, um, that we've incurred for a number of things, um, supplies, gloves, masks, sanitation, materials, porta potties, that sort of thing. And then we also have expenses for, uh, labor, uh, which is around forty thousand dollars, I believe. Um, and that includes our salaried employees. Um, so again, we're, we're kind of taking this day by day and hoping to get more directions on what exactly these can be used for. Uh, but the first step in this is to have an agreement with the county. Um, once we approve this agreement and the other, uh, municipalities do, we'll opt into the program, uh, on DOLA's portal, and then, uh, the allocation will be assigned to us. And as we go through the process, we'll request those directly from DOLA. Um, again, we must opt into this program. Um, the M O U before you tonight is, uh, allowing that, allowing us to opt into the program, agreeing that we're going to, um, abide by the terms with the other municipalities, essentially that we will take responsibility for our own allocation, um, as well as keep track of our own expenses, uh, which we have been doing, um, with an activity code in our accounting system. Um, that being said, um, Um that being said, um just one more note uh that Bill had mentioned earlier uh based on programs, these items could be reimbursed if they hadn't been budgeted for before March twenty-seventh uh of this year. Um so with that, I can take any questions um from council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer, and this is exciting. Do we have any questions from council? Can I, can Mr. Frank, I see your hand. Yep.
Yes, uh Kendall, and item three or number F or, sorry, item F. It says, and I just wanna highlight this for the the public, that all parties can seek partners on projects eligible for cares reimbursement from among the other eligible entries, entities under cares, et cetera. And uh I just wanted to plant and clarify, that means that we can use this money to partner with our other entities to help bolster areas where they may be needing as well. And that gives us an opportunity to increase our impact beyond just the city of Montrose if we could choose to do so. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes, I believe that's correct. Um the other thing I should mention is based on the funding formula from the state um and the treasury, special districts in Colorado are also eligible for funding. Um so there's like ten percent that was set aside of that two hundred and seventy-five million. So that's funding that the Rec District, if they're interested in pursuing, can go for. Um and the Rec District, as we know, has been helping out a lot with the delivery of food and so forth. Um but yes, I do believe that we are able, based on on that, that to partner with other organizations uh in the community as well.
Great. I think partnerships have always worked well for Montrose, or at least recently worked really well for Montrose. We've been able to get more done when we collaborate and I think relationships across the community are really at an all-time high. Okay, any other comments or questions on this? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Montrose and Montrose County for the application of the Department of Local Affairs for coronavirus relief funds as presented.
I'll second that.
Great. We've got a first and a second, so I will ask Michaela Andrew to take a vote.
All right, Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
And Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. I think we are um on the right path here to working with our county to to see what kind of things we can be reimbursed for. Um next on our agenda, switching to the next page, page three, we are moving on to staff reports. Um item A is our sales use and excise tax report. Finance Director Shani Wittenberg, welcome. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So this would be the April report. Um and I think I can share my screen. There we go. So it would be April twenty-twenty collections compared to April of twenty-nineteen and then year-to-date for both years. Sales and use taxes collected at three percent. And unfortunately, we have a nice Christmas screen here, green and red. Retail sales tax is down two point six percent in April compared to April of twenty-nine.
Hang on, hang on, is anyone else? I'm not seeing it. It says you are started sharing your screen, but it hasn't popped up for me anyway. Everybody but me, huh? I get a big black box.
Why don't I stop sharing and then I'll reshare it? How's that?
Try that, and if not, I know it's in our packet and I can follow along there for sure. But I thought if it was everybody, I wanted to say something. Sorry.
Okay. All right, so I did stop sharing and I'm resharing. Can everybody see it?
Yep.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, Miss Miss Bynum.
All right.
Yes.
All right, so um I'm on screen three, Barbara, if you wanna follow along.
Okay.
All right, so sit retail sales tax, April compared to April of twenty-nineteen is actually down two point six percent. Construction use tax is down twelve point eight percent. Use and auto use tax is down twenty-seven point five percent. That's actually a trend we've been seeing over the last couple of years as far as use auto use tax goes. And then total collections down four point seven percent. First time we've seen a negative budget variance for a month. Um but when we move on here to year-to-date sales, we're still um got a positive budget variance, which is good. Retail sales tax is up one point six percent year-to-date compared to uh twenty-nineteen through April or seventy-six thousand dollars. Construction use tax is up thirty-four point four percent or fifty-seven thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax is down thirteen point nine percent or forty-nine thousand dollars with total collections up one point six percent for the year-to-date or eighty-four thousand dollars. Positive budget variance of three point nine percent or just about two hundred and six thousand dollars. So we do definitely um budget conservatively when it comes to sales and use tax. Uh we don't wanna find ourselves in a panic mode to make cuts when sales and use tax doesn't come in like we thought it should. Uh public safety sales and use taxes, this is the point five eight percent that's been added to the total sales tax rate to fund public safety in our community. April sales and use tax collected was two hundred fifty-three thousand, one sixty-four. For year-to-date, we're actually a positive budget variance, so what we estimated we would receive from the public safety sales tax of five point seven percent. The Montrose Recreation District, effective in twenty-fourteen, we started collecting point three percent to fund their new community recreation center. And probably collected a hundred and thirty-five thousand or one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, down two point one percent to April of twenty-nineteen, but still a positive year-to-date collections of one point six percent. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds point nine percent to our sales tax and restaurant excise tax adds point eight percent. Unfortunately, those are the industries that have been hit hard with this COVID. Hotel excise tax is down forty-eight point six percent in April. Restaurant excise tax is down twenty-eight point six percent with total collections down thirty-one point seven percent or a negative budget variance for April of almost thirty percent. Year-to-date collections for hotel excise tax are down twenty-three point three percent or six thousand dollars. Restaurant excise tax down seven point five percent or ten thousand dollars with total excise tax down nine point eight percent or sixteen thousand dollars. But negative budget variance for hotel and restaurant excise tax of six point five percent or ten thousand dollars. Retail sales enhancement, in nineteen ninety, the vendors agreed to give up a portion of their fee to fund this program to to promote retail sales in Montrose. In April, we collected almost thirty-one thousand dollars or twelve point five percent more than we did in April of twenty-nineteen. It's a little bit of a misnomer because we did increase our sales tax, so that gives the vendors a little bit more. And we also in um on the other side of that, we give more to our retail sales enhancement fund. Year-to-date collections up eighteen point five percent. That, that is my report. I will entertain any questions or concerns you all may have.
Great, thank you very much. You're welcome. Questions from council on that sales tax report?
No, I have nothing.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on, um we have public information report with our city manager, Bill Bell.
I'm going to defer to a couple of staff members uh to talk about a few different things. Maybe Kendall could go first and share some exciting news on the grant coordination front. And then Police Chief Hall could talk to us a little bit about some meetings he's had recently. And then maybe Ann could talk to us a little bit about the Fourth of July.
Thank you, Bill. Uh thank you, city council. Uh have some really exciting news today for the city of Montrose and the Boys and Girls Club, Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. Our application uh seeking six hundred thousand dollars uh in community development block grant funds has been selected for funding. Um so this is major news uh for the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. Uh a really exciting day for Montrose youth. Um the funding's gonna be pr- be provided um to assist with building their new facility on Niagara, um which hopefully will be able to break ground um next year, uh next spring. Um so really excited about this. It was a great partnership. Uh the city, again, has a long record of partnering with our nonprofits because of city council's interest um to to promote their good and and their efforts. Um I do wanna thank uh Lori Sharp um for her effort. She's a local, she's my colleague, but also a local grant writer that that took on a big chunk of the grant application and I reviewed it with her and we fine-tuned it. And so um that's one thing that I really wanna make clear, it's a team effort. Um and with particularly with CDBG grants, sometimes the the private grant writers don't always get that recognition. You know, with our last grant, Janie Sorenson over at the Center for Mental Health was huge in in getting that grant. So all of these are a team effort and I just wanna thank them um and the leadership of city council and the leadership of the Boys and Girls Club um for for pursuing this project. It's really exciting. I'm looking forward to to the construction. So, thank you, Bill.
Hi, city council. Uh I guess I'm up next. I wanted to give everyone a a quick update. Uh before the uh Black Lives Matters uh March rally protest uh here about a week and a half ago, uh our agency did reach out to those um event organizers and wanted to sit down and have a meeting with them. And so uh that was actually accomplished today. We had our first meeting uh with four of of uh of those uh members of the Black Lives Matter Montrose group. And I have to say, it was, I think, a very successful meeting. I think we had um some pretty open communication. And um without getting into more details, um which we can, you know, at any time if you'd like, uh we have agreed to have um uh another meeting and try to set some goals uh that we can, uh both our agency and that group can work together on. So uh without further ado, I just wanted to uh let everyone know that uh we're gonna work hard together to uh to try to accomplish some things. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief Hall. That's fantastic. Appreciate it.
And I think that I am next, Anne Morgan Thaler, Assistant City Manager. And I um have the pleasure of working really closely with the OBT and also our community events coordinator, Alexis Faran. And they have been working to put together activities for our community um so that we can all feel together while we're staying socially distanced during the Fourth of July week, which is quickly coming up. And so I'm gonna give a little bit of a preview here. Um some details are still um being solidified and will be released soon. Um but some things to look forward to, we talked about previously, is the antisocial ice social. So there will be free red, white, and blue popsicles um in the city of Montrose for our community members while supplies last. And um a great plan is in the works for that and we'll be releasing information in the newspaper and also on social media about how people can um get a popsicle during the week of Fourth of July. So we think that's really fun. And also, we are encouraging people and businesses to really spruce up um our residences and our businesses with festive Fourth of July and patriotic decor. Um so if you want to, you can have your own parade through our community to look at all of the great um decorations and even decorate your car if you want to. So these are your individual parades on your own to check out our community and see how festive it is during the Fourth of July week. Also, there will be a poetry contest um for students grades third through eighth. It's called the Poetic Patriots Poetry Contest. Um so we're, information about that will be online soon. And then um something else that is happening is an America the Beautiful photo contest. Uh submit your beautiful photos for a chance to win um through July first. So um those are sneak previews and again, information in the newspaper and also on social media. The week of Fourth of July, we'll be keeping with this virtual theme. We've all gotten really used to doing the things online that we used to do in person, like council meetings. So um there'll be recipes shared online on our social media accounts, um encouraging people to come together through social media, um and also just out in the community, knowing that we're all celebrating together even if we're not down in the park all at the same time. Um so that that's my update on the Fourth of July. Thank you.
Great. Okay, Mr. Bell, did you have any additional comments? I know we have quite a few events coming up, for example, our spring cleanup and our pump track volunteer day. Is there someone who can tell us a little bit about those or I can share what I know? I'll keep going then, okay. So I know that the pump track down in Cerise Park, which is a bike park, that they're working on that. And if you um if you are interested in helping, looking for volunteers to help groom the new pump track, make sure to bring your gloves, sturdy shoes, no flip-flops, a mask, snacks, water. And um on June twentieth, between eight and four o'clock. Um and that's the dirt area between Cerise and Riverbottom Parks. And then our city's spring cleanup is happening this Friday and Saturday, seven AM to seven PM both days. And that's at the San Juan Bypass, at the city shop. And that's an opportunity for city residents to drop off a bunch of stuff. I'm not gonna go into the list of what you can drop off and what you can't drop off. Suffice it to say that all of that information is on the city website. Um but it is um available and free on that, on those two days, Friday and Saturday. Any other, um I have a question for staff. Can anyone, I know that um Chelsea Rostie and Lisa Del Piccolo are not here, but what's the status of the city helping restaurants change their liquor license um boundaries so that they might be able to expand onto sidewalks or parklets? Does anyone know? No, because the two people who would know are not here. No, um Anne Morgan Thaler, do you have any update on that?
I I was just gonna mention that I haven't heard anything from Lisa that anybody applied, but Anne might know differently.
We've had one apply.
Go ahead, go ahead, Stephen.
We've had one apply uh and I believe another one has inquired uh and is starting to do the process.
Right, okay.
That's my update too, and we still encourage businesses to contact Lisa or Chelsea if they'd like to learn more. And we're facilitating that process um to try and make it as easy as possible for um businesses that are eligible to expand onto the sidewalks.
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam Mayor, for filling in on the spring cleanup. I apologize for Jim Shide. On his behalf, they, he has an emergency, he's dealing with a tree fell and let all the cows out, so he's fixing a fence.
Is that a service that we offer on behalf of the city or is that his backyard?
Yeah, I think it's a relative's backyard or something like that.
Cause.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to him about adding to his scope of work.
I got fence work if he, no, I'm kidding. My my husband did the fence work while he couldn't operate, so that was a nice little break. Okay. Um anyway, what, any other comments from staff? Two hours is about my limit on being serious, sorry. Um any other updates from city staff that they wanna let city council know about? I don't see any, so now I'm gonna go to city counselors who might want to um give us an update or let us know what is going on. I see Mr. Frank's hands up.
So yesterday, I had the the great pleasure of going down to the police department and having a kind of a virtual tour of their new body camera systems. And that was fantastic. And it's really, really exciting. And as per suggestions, they are going to put out a video kind of highlighting the uses, capabilities, and all of the wonderful features that our new Axon body cameras have. And I think it's really critical to know that our citizens will be able to, very soon, hopefully, view that video and find out what it is that shows that Montrose's PD is cutting edge, top of the heap.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, I see your hand.
I just uh wanted to make a comment. It it might be old news, cause I've been staying home a lot. But today, we drove around uh uh Real Grand and
but today, we drove around, uh, uh, Rio Grande and River Bottom, um, Drive Road, whatever it is, looks fantastic. I wanted to give kudos to Scott and his whole team, the people that designed that. It is just beautiful, and, uh, this is the first time I've seen it since it was done. And I just wanted to give a shout out to all those people who helped make that a reality. It's fantastic, so, good job.
Definitely. Mr. Glassbell, did I see your hands up a second ago?
Nope, I don't have anything today.
Okay, Mr. Bowman, anything today? No, okay, great, then I will, um, thank everyone for coming tonight, it was one of our longer city council meetings. It is difficult over Zoom, it's hard to read the room, but I really, um, I really wanna thank our citizens, most of whom have left, but maybe might have tuned in from home over dinner. Um, I really wanna thank them for coming and sharing their comments with City Council. Um, we, we appreciate that very much as we try and do the work of the city here at our council meetings. Um, and I have nothing else for tonight, so thank you, everyone, thanks for working hard, go out there and have a great week.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Perfect, and Mr. Bowman? That was your way of saying you're ready to be done, okay, fantastic, we're outta here, good night, have fun, see you later.
Thanks to Mr. Stoney too, making this work.
Yeah, for sure.